Oh, now it is working. Some magical thing you did over there Barb, thank you. So in this next hour, I want to provide you a little bit of information about the Strategic Framework Planning Group, which is a group of mostly educators that will help us flesh out the details of the strategy part of the strategic framework. But we're going to spend most of our time getting your feedback on our best thinking on the priority areas and related projects for the next strategic framework. So I wanted to reorient you to where we are in the process. We are over the halfway point, which is pretty miraculous, I think. We did our listening and learning phase October through end of January. In February, we had the board retreat, which was kind of our transition point from talking just about what we want to accomplish, goals, core values, vision, but how to accomplish it. We also used the month of February and early March to check back in with some of our key engagement groups to just check our thinking. Did we hear things right? Are the themes that we think emerged from the listening and learning phase the right themes? And we're pretty much done with that, which leads us to this phase that we're entering into now, March through May, which is really about getting into the nitty gritty of planning our strategy. The Strategic Framework Planning Group will meet a couple of times during this timeframe and the board will have check-ins all along the way. So that we'll get back to you in June with our kind of completed draft of the strategic framework for one last round of feedback before we finish it over the summer. And as a reminder, you've completed your work on vision, goals, and core values and now we're entering into this phase on strategy. A few words on the Strategic Framework Planning Group. This is not a new concept. When we first wrote the framework five years ago, we brought together a similar group of educators, around 60 or 70 people. And you can see some pictures of the previous groups there. That group not only convened several times when we initially wrote the strategic framework, but annually that team has met to talk about progress and to make adjustments to the framework along the way. We're going to do kind of a pretty similar thing this time around, except that we are also going to include students and parents. So there'll be around 10 students who are invited representing a variety of viewpoints from our schools. Same with about 10 parents with a variety of viewpoints from our schools. Obviously, heavy on school staff, teachers, principals, with some central office representation. And the purpose of the team is to help us make sure that the specifics of the strategy are strong and on target. That group is coming together on March 21st with the full group. Based on what comes out of that meeting, there'll be kind of subgroups that meet during the month of April to take a close look at key components. And then that group will come back together on May 9th to sort of basically confirm their recommendations for strategy.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Did they apply to be on the board, were they selected, how did that go?
No, they weren't, they didn't apply. We started with reinvention to the people who were on the original group because the idea of having some historical knowledge, people who've been along the journey for the past five years. Once we had a sense of who wanted to keep going, then we expanded it to a larger group. And we drew heavily from a lot of different advisory groups that already exist, just so we're getting, you know, kind of a good wide swath of people involved. So no, there was not an application process, it's a great question. That's pretty much it. There are two board members who are going to serve on that group, James and Kate. So I want to thank you in advance for being part of this really powerful planning team. Let me pause there to see if there are any other questions about the, what's the planning team. Okay, we'll keep you updated, right? There are those updates in April and May. Every time we have an update, we'll bring you up to speed on what's going on with the planning group as well. I think there's a lot of excitement about that group, which is pretty cool. So now let's talk about strategy. At the retreat, as a reminder, we shared with you some background information. I'm not going to go over this again, just want to remind you. We shared with you the kind of the big themes that came through from the many stakeholders that we talked to throughout the fall. About over 1,000 people participated in that process. And we shared with you our best thinking on the theory of action that might drive the future strategy. This theory of action has five kind of key components or levers. The first is we're thinking about how we can better empower our school communities, giving schools more ownership, not just over their school improvement plan, but their school instructional design. We've been talking about how we can better invest in people with a commitment to making sure that the educators in our district are anti-racist and they're culturally responsive. And how do we kind of build our HR and human capital strategy around that really important idea? We talked about streamlining priorities. If we want our schools to be focused on the implementation of their school improvement plans, their instructional designs, that means that we want kind of less imposed by the central office. And we want to test that any priorities that central office does take on is truly in service of what schools absolutely need in order to get the job done. We talked about making a commitment in this next framework to do better planning for the future, thinking long-term and not just short-term because we think that we have that obligation. Our district will only be strong if we're planning for future generations and that includes future generations of leaders and board members. And the fifth big idea was about taking calculated risks, taking on some, not necessarily new ways of working, but stronger ways of working to ensure that we are just getting smarter about knowing what's working in our district, only expanding when we know it's working, and learning something about how to take more calculated risks. So those were the big ideas that we talked about at the retreat. What we did not talk about at the retreat are what are exactly the priorities that we want to take on. So back to this idea number three, right? What are the priorities that we want to focus in on in the next five years? And that's the discussion I want to have tonight. The senior team took some time recently, along with some other central office leaders, to do some thinking about like what makes a priority, a good priority? How do you know it should be a priority? And we've kind of scoped out a set of criteria for making those decisions. Clearly, we think any priority area that we take on must be aligned with the board's approved vision, core values, and goals. We think it has to be evidence-based, which means not only does research potentially tell us that the priority area is aligned to need, but do our stakeholders value it, right? So it's got to be an evidence-based need, but also something that's actually valued by the people that we serve. We want to make sure that the priority area is something that schools cannot attend to on their own, meaning that if the central office team doesn't intervene, schools will struggle to be able to move the work forward. And of course, we want to make sure that there is a possibility for real impact. We also talked a lot about not just the priority areas, but the actual projects within each priority area. And we set a five criteria for those priority projects. Again, alignment to the vision. And specifically, does the work that we're proposing build on where the district has been and where it's going? So is there coherence? Again, we talked about the priority project being evidence-based. We talked about the central office role in forwarding the priority project. We talked about impact and of course, capacity to actually do the work. I know, James, you talk about implementation constantly. Can we ensure that the implementation quality will be high? So one of the things that we want to test ourselves on is do we actually have the capacity to do the work well? So again, I don't want to belabor these, but want you to see that we've put some real thought into the priorities or the criteria that should help us test whether or not the priorities are the right ones. So let me tell you where we've landed and then I want to open it up for discussion. We, in the last framework, had a set of five priority areas for central office. And we had a very long list of priority projects and actions underneath each one. And I will defend that that was the right thing to do at that time because we were striving for coherence and there were just a lot of things that we had to tighten up as an organization. In this framework, using the criteria that I just scoped out, we're really trying to have a smaller number of priority areas, you'll only see three, with a shorter number of priority projects. And there are, I think, about five under each one, all of which we think do meet the criteria that we set out. The first priority that we're thinking about is investment in ensuring that students have a well-rounded experience that challenges and supports them. We think that this moves us beyond simply having a coherent curriculum, which was our major goal in the first framework, into having one that's really challenging, right? That helps students enter into deeper and richer learning experiences. That's what we want for kids. That's what we think we heard in our feedback from stakeholders. The set of priority projects potentially could fall along these lines. We're thinking that it would be powerful for us to take on some work in the area of early childhood, which would enable us to set up students for more success when they come into kindergarten. We're thinking we want to invest even more time and energy into primary literacy instruction, which is basically K-3, those early grades. That would include real intention, not just to how we teach reading, but how we work with parents to support it in the early years and how we make sure that that experience is developmentally appropriate for children in the early grades. Our teachers are giving us a lot of feedback on wanting to balance that. How do you make sure that kids are learning how to read in a developmentally appropriate way? So we push ourselves on this. We're very interested in digging at the secondary level into academic literacy, which is not just about the basics of reading, but about teaching the academic ways of reading, writing, and thinking that are necessary for success at the secondary level, as well as attending to secondary reading intervention, which we do not think we've gotten right and our schools are struggling with pretty mightily. The next priority project we're thinking about tackling in the next five years is related to the curriculum that we teach and the instructional materials that we use. This was a major thing that came up repeatedly through the engagement process. There is a desire from students, staff, and families for curriculum that is more historically accurate, not more, is historically accurate and multicultural. And then lastly, we're very interested in pushing ourselves on advanced learning and advanced coursework. And that would be elementary, middle, and high school. How do we make sure that more students are, not just accessing advanced learning opportunities, but that they are strong, robust, and meeting students' needs? So that's kind of the package of ideas under that first priority area. And again, I mean, this is a big task. Are these the things that are going to move the needle for us in the next five years? Second priority area that we're thinking about is related to the idea of relationships. Our school board has talked a lot about the importance of trusting relationships. That is like a critical ingredient to success in the classroom. And we really want to push ourselves in this area. We've got five possible priority projects that we would like to flesh out in more detail. One is about youth voice and leadership, with an emphasis on youth voice and leadership for students of color. We are very interested in building a stronger talent pipeline for the staff members in MMSD. That means continuing to work on diversity hiring, pathways to licensure, but moving beyond that. Like how do we build out a pipeline of talent through teacher leadership, through the development of a stronger principal pipeline, so that we really are growing our own at every level? The third priority project that we're thinking about is related to family partnership and advocacy. And that is perhaps focused on investing in key roles that bring families into the equation and support African-American youth. We definitely want to continue our work on community schools. That came through loud and clear in our engagement sessions as well. And we're very interested in full integration of behavioral health across schools in our district, which is something I know the board has talked about in the past as well. And then let me touch on the third priority area. So in addition to investing in more well-rounded, powerful learning experiences and relationships, we think that we want to prioritize just building out paths to success after high school. We're thrilled by the recent news that our graduation rates are going up. We want to dig into that more. But graduating from high school is not, you know, that's not enough, that's not the end game. It's always been about students having good paths to post-secondary options. So again, there's a small set of kind of key areas, projects, that we think are critical. This is going to be a priority area, the eighth to ninth grade transition, the work that we've already begun on middle school redesign, smaller learning communities at the middle school, creating more intimate learning experiences for adolescents. We're interested in continuing our work on high school pathways and programs. And I say programs because that includes things like the Early College Sem Academy, right? It's not just pathways, but you know, the kind of portfolio things that we do at the secondary level. The Opportunity Youth Project that we've been working on this year, which is about re-engagement of youth. And finally, you'll see Avid programming on here. And Avid is something we've been working on for a long time now. And so you may be surprised to see it on the list. But we are very interested in really pushing on Avid as a strategy. We've seen, as Mary has mentioned in the past, some really great outcomes. More Latino youth getting into post-secondary than ever. We attribute that in large part to the work that Avid has helped us accomplish in the last five or so years. But we haven't been seeing those same outcomes for African-American youth. So we just, we want to press ourselves on Avid to see what more we can do. So these are the three priority areas that we're playing around with. Possible projects within each of these priority areas, all aligned, we think, to the criteria that we've outlined. I want to remind the board that these things aren't all that's happening in the district, right? If our theory of action is working well, schools are driving their school-based strategy. They've got their school improvement plans, right? We're supporting them with their powerful instructional designs for students with disabilities, for English language learners, for advanced learners, et cetera. This work is the work that if the central office does not take it on, schools will struggle to do it well on their own, right? We want to press ourselves on that. So I'll open it up at this point to pass it back to you, James, for any questions, obviously. But mainly, I want to know what seems to be on target here, what's missing? What would you have put on this list? Yeah, what would you take off, what would you add?
Yeah, thank you. Very important topic. On the priority one, I'll start off just with a brief comment. Because of some of the comments we've heard from staff and others. For me, one of the things that's important is the area of literacy. Are we really celebrating our youth in terms of their literacy levels? And we've heard from staff that we still have a lot of work to do.
We sure do.
And so that's an area, I don't know what the strategy should be at this point, whether we need more reading interventionist, I'm not sure what the actual strategy is. But I'd like to see us really as a priority on the priority one to really focus on reading. Because we know kids of color are really reading below level and that the, quite the disproportion there is really not good. So that's an area that is important, I think, to everyone, I just mean. And for kids to have-
This is what's nodding.
For kids to have good outcomes in just about all these subjects, they're going to have to achieve reading. So that's just a quick comment for me to get us started.
That's great.
Nikki.
I'd also like to look into, which I've said before, non-verbal testing requirements because not all kids are verbal at that age. Not, those who are non-verbal does not mean they don't know the material, it means they're non-verbal. And right now, the assessment we have also is based on phonetics. Again, that's wonderful for certain groups and that's great. Unfortunately, there are certain groups, especially sight readers, where they don't do phonics.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting that you say that, Nikki, because at one point, I mean, this list, you can only imagine, has changed a lot of times behind the scenes. And at one point, one of the things I had on this list, and it might, I don't know, yeah, it's dropped off along the way, has been about looking at the assessment system. know, yeah, it's dropped off along the way, has been about looking at the assessment system. And I think that work just needs to happen no matter what, right? Like, it does, it continues to need some attention to make sure that it's adequately capturing what our students know and are able to do. So I just, I appreciate that comment and want to think about that.
Okay, Anna?
Yeah, I agree with James, that literacy instruction and reading instruction, whether that's interventions, enrichment, that type of stuff is critical.
Yeah.
Especially at the secondary, middle schools and high schools.
Agreed.
The other thing, I would just say around the full-day 4K, I'd be supportive of that, but I would look at it more as in targeted areas and not necessarily rolling it out across the district.
I think that's right, yeah.
And then my only question is about the multicultural curriculum. So like, how, how do you see that, like, interfacing with our, like, Mondo stuff?
Yeah. You know, I think, I want to say two things, Anna. One is, I think, this is a lot of the work that we'll be bringing to the Strategic Framework Planning Group, right? Like, how do we put these strategies into action? So I don't want to pretend I have all the answers now, because that would be premature, right? That's coming in the next several months. And I, I think that there is a desire to have stronger supplementary materials, right, in the hands of all of our teachers. And I think when it comes, God, I'm almost afraid to say this out loud, when it comes to the core literacy curriculum, which is Mondo, we adopted that six years ago now, something like that, does that seem about right, six years? We want, we think it's time to revisit it, and that's what we're hearing from our teachers, that we may want to embark on a better literacy curriculum adoption at some point. I mean, tis the season, you know? Six, seven years in is kind of about when you, when you do that again. So again, I don't want to say that we're doing that, or that's, that's the strategy, but I think it'll be some combination of looking at the curriculum scopes, the recommended materials aligned to those scopes, and in some cases, maybe the actual core curriculum. And I would say at the elementary level in literacy, that should be something that we're taking a look, a fresh look at.
You did?
I guess start by echoing James on the primary literacy, and I think that either MTSS or interventions or something should probably be part of the primary as well as the secondary.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that that's-
Agreed.
You know, catching that at sixth grade is good, catching it at third is better.
Uh huh, yeah.
Others, a couple of comments, but more kind of questions about the process, and I guess the first one is trying to figure out the relationship between the projects and then the strategies that are referenced with the planning group. Are those the same things, or are they, the, the, the planning group is, is, will develop strategies, quote.
Yeah, yeah.
And these are projects, and so I guess I'm trying to figure out how those relate to one another.
Yeah, I think that the planning group is going to be looking at everything we do. So there'll be like a sub-team that's really looking at how we support schools with their instructional design. There'll be a group that's really looking at professional learning in our school district. There will be some subgroup that's taking a closer look at these central office priorities, right, and how to put them into action.
So that's a wider-
It's a wider thing, yeah.
That makes, that helps a little bit. I also kind of like to kind of back up to the rubrics that we're, that we were given.
Yeah.
And I guess, you know, the first question is that, or request would be that it would be good to see how the things that are in the PowerPoint-
That get scored, yeah.
And perhaps the ones that didn't quite make it.
Yeah.
You know, the next, the next three to five, or whatever it is. And that's both in terms of areas and in terms of projects.
Yeah.
The areas one generally looks fine. One kind of quick comment is that on both these, it says leverage specific expertise within central office. I think that we need to, I would like to have expertise within our schools, leverage, recognized also as, as a, as a, as a part of the rubric, that, you know, that if we have expertise in our schools and not necessarily in our central office, that, that's something that, you know, we still have the, we have capacity, whether it's central office capacity or school-based capacity.
Yeah.
That's relative, relatively minor, and in general, you know, both, both these rubrics look fine, the area criteria more so, with the projects criteria, particularly when we talk about capacity.
Yeah.
The three bullet points, it just, it kind of sounds yes somewhat or no, kind of is how it comes down, and that's, it's not on the PowerPoint, but it's on the supplementary document.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I guess that, I think that financial viability and sustainability has to be given more weight than just, this is something cool, and if we did it, would probably be a good idea. And so I think that when we're doing a rubric, that, you know, how do we make decisions? Two projects that are otherwise identical in their importance and probable impacts, and one costs $6 million and one costs-
$60,000, yeah.
Right. That's, you know, that should be part of the rubric, some kind of comparison there. And so I, and I don't see that captured very well here.
Okay.
It might be, it might have been in practice, but the rub, but the rubric itself doesn't.
Well, what I can for sure do, TJ, is share with all of you the score, like, our actual scoring on the rubric, just so you get a sense. And I think the other thing to know is, I mean, I obviously want to hear from everybody around this table about these ideas, and we'll, you know, make adjustments accordingly, but the, the planning group is going to have some thoughts on this too, right? They're going to say, you know, you got this right, and you got this other thing wrong. So when it comes back to in April, right, we're going to see some sort of back and forth happening as we winnow down these priority areas and projects to the right, the right ones. But I think the scored rubric will help with that.
And I guess the other, the final piece is that something on behavior, climate, something besides family voice, student voice, but rather day-to-day experiences in schools would be among my, something that, as either a area or project, would be, would be very welcome.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Dean?
Yeah. I'm just going to talk about priority one, I got a couple of comments on the others.
Okay.
But when it comes to the literacy, it's heightened in, it's mentioned in two bullets out of the five.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's just a question of reviewing the curriculum and instruction, but I think we have to look at staffing pattern too. And if it's a priority and we're not doing it right with the staffing we've got-
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not so certain, it's, it's a, it's fully a question of the instruction methods and curriculum. Maybe we just have to double down on the people working with kids that are struggling. So I think that has to be included in, as the third part of what we're looking at here.
Yeah. Yeah, that gets into the how a little bit, and somebody mentioned reading interventionist as an example, maybe it was you, James, yeah. Okay, thank you, Dean, that's helpful.
Certainly hearing a lot about it from just the exercise going on at Leopold.
Oh my God, yeah, right.
You know, and people, on the surface, it doesn't make sense, in a way, say, well, if this is an area of priority and it's an area of weakness, why are we, even, well, yeah, maybe enrollment will go down by 50 kids, what is that, so what? We should maybe even put another reader there just because of the scores. So if we're going to make it a priority, you got to look at the whole thing.
Yeah, okay. That gets a little bit back to that criteria related to the project is financially sustainable, like, what does it actually take to do this well? So that's appreciated, Dean.
Are you going to do?
Yeah, Dean, did you want to touch on-
Oh, you want to go on to the next one, or?
Yeah, if you want to.
Should I just run the whole thing?
Yeah, go for it.
All right, number-
Run the table.
Okay, the second priority, when it comes to the community schools-
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that we're able to specifically address as a district with instruction and curriculum and the other, and the mental health we're bringing in, but with, with community schools, this is because it's the opportunity to partner with community partners to bring in resources of things we can't address.
Right.
And with a community school concept, I think what we should, what I like to see with that is, is beefing up the, the food opportunities we bring to these schools and also housing.
Yeah.
Housing is a critical piece to many of our students not being successful, that we don't have much to do about. Matter of fact, we hardly have anything to do about it.
Yeah.
But we can, by partnering with community partners that do exactly that. So I, I think when it comes to the community schools, it's not just what we're doing, but what we don't have there as well. Those two things, to me, are critical.
Okay.
That need to be added into the community school concept.
Okay.
And the third one, I'm a little not certain what exactly we mean by middle school redesign. It, you know, the smaller learning communities, that sounds great, but coupled with different type of curriculum that a little bit more, when we say historically accurate, multicultural, I know that when I taught, I used Howard Zinn's book, I taught social studies, I used that, that's not, you know, and I'm not the only teacher that did it, a lot of teachers bring their own stuff.
Absolutely.
And Howard Zinn's, I used, and just because it was February and kind of fit in, I would bring Black Panther papers in and, and other things that were different.
Yeah.
That, this is what they were sold. So that was interesting, but we, that was just because, and a lot of teachers do that already.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to hear a little bit more, I'd like to see some examples of what historically accurate and multicultural curriculums all look like, that, as a district-wide stuff, you know? So I'd just like to see some of that stuff.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you, Dean. That's great. You know, on middle school redesign, I don't know if these are the, all the right words, but this is really essentially the kind of body of work that Cindy presented to you guys a week ago. It's just making sure to hold that central and, and not let go of it. And I think what you'll notice on this list, I hope you are, there's not really a lot new here, right? This is really about extending work that we've already started and just kind of recommitting to, to doing it and narrowing in on it. So I just, I wanted to highlight that, I hope that's coming through. I think Laura wanted to say something.
Yeah, I can't determine that. We'll, we'll do it that way.
Yeah, just like jumping off of what you said about the, there's like, hopefully a few things that are new.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know if this is included in the integrated behavioral health, but when we were doing the BEP evaluation, I think it was mentioned that we wanted to isolate whether it was the lack of fidelity in the interventions of the BEP, rather than just the policy itself. So I would hope that that would definitely be a priority, either, one, making sure, determining whether it is the fidelity of the implementation, and then two, making sure that it is carried out more universally and fairly in the future.
Yeah.
I think, is, would that be included in the integrated behavioral health?
Um, I think that's part of it, but not entirely yet. I mean, it's a very precise component. You know, it's interesting, like, I, I think what's been hard about this is differentiating between what requires continuous improvement in a central office department's work streams, right, which is, I mean, there are a lot of them, and what rises to the occasion of a priority project in the strategic framework, right? And I definitely hear your feedback about wanting to kind of see, as it relates to our work on culture and climate, which includes school discipline.
Yeah.
Where is that in these priorities? I'm taking that away. And if it's not on this list, if there's anything that we care about that's not on this list, it doesn't necessarily mean that the district doesn't care about it, we're not doing it, that we're not continuously improving it, because it is the work that we do as a school district. Yeah, but I appreciate that, got it.
So I'm, I mean, I'm supportive of a lot of the priorities on these lists. I think just from the three big, bold priorities, and we chatted about this, I mean, to me, this sort of feels like we're resetting three new goals, and so I would just use our three goals-
Three goals.
For these three sections instead of a new set of goals, essentially.
Mm-hmm.
And they tie somewhat to the way that it's structured right now.
Yeah.
Maybe just to touch on a couple of pieces, the, the 4K, I'm very supportive of. My question would be, do we want to go farther, right? Do we want to push into daycare in some of our facility, high schools? Again, not all, but do we want to push farther in terms of early childhood and thinking differently about that kind of birth to five timeline? Advanced learning, for me, the devil's in the details here. We've taken a lot of goes at this one and made very little progress over quite a number of years, and so I'd love to see this rise to be a true priority in the district. I haven't seen it yet, so I'm cautiously optimistic, I guess. On the, the middle priority, for me, facilities really belong here.
Yeah.
We are kind of, so on the second one-
Oh, sorry, sorry.
We are woefully under, kind of where we should be from a debt perspective in the, just, I think Mike, you might have said, for the lowest in the entire state, maybe, or-ish, or something like that.
We're lower than many.
So we, we just have a lot of headroom in terms of how we could invest in our schools from a facilities perspective, and I can't imagine thinking about climate without thinking about facilities.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd really like, and that is something that would need to be driven by central office.
Yeah.
With some powerful vision around having facilities that reflect the kind of learning and collaboration and relationships that we want our students and our staff to experience.
Yeah.
So I would, I would strongly suggest at least us talking about that.
Yeah.
And then on, I think on this one as well, I think just some clarity around teacher leadership and principal pipeline. For me, this is really around investing in some of our current staff-
That's what it is.
And in particular, staff of color to have a kind of career path that is, is exciting. So-
That's what this is meant to be, yeah.
I would like to see that kind of drawn out a little bit.
Yeah.
So maybe overall, two other comments. One is, I would love to see less pri, less actions. Just, I just, I know we're doing a lot of this already, but love to see less. And then the flip side of that is some things not on the list that I just wanted to raise. One is year-round school. We heard-
We did hear a lot on that.
This comment from a lot of people in our listening sessions.
Yeah.
And, you know, these are very near-in actions right now, and so I think it's at least, I would like to have this, this group of whether, is the near-in good enough, right? Is the stuff that we're already working on that's kind of achievable and close, is that good enough for the kind of district that we want to be?
Mm-hmm.
So year-round school would be a bolder move.
Yeah.
There's nothing on here about bilingual education.
Mm-mm.
And we've made a lot of investments there. Would be curious if we could be more strategic about that, or if we, again, kind of think differently about how we're making those investments. And then the last one is around alternative programs. So we, you know, we just saw a Montessori school chartered in Madison. Do we want to think more, again, kind of bolder about an arts school or an IV program or any number of alternatives that any of us might kind of?
Mm-hmm.
So I just, again, I don't know what the appetite of this group is to have those discussions, but I'd at least like to kind of have the conversation around whether the near-in is good enough for the next five years, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to comment on some- Yeah, I, I'd love to comment on some of those ideas, Kate. Um, I think that, um, I've been kind of, uh, struggling a little bit with what goes on this list and what doesn't, clearly. I mean, it's, you know, uh, it's tricky. I want it to be streamlined as possible too, which is why it actually is where it is. And, and Kate and I talked about this a little bit, one-on-one, but, um, I want to show, point something out to you guys that is part of kind of the struggle, um, which is this. So, the, originally, and we may merge these in the end, um, but we wanted to pull apart the priority areas that we were planning on tackling, you know, kind of in the here or now, right? Um, and what, uh, may take a little more time in planning long-term. And so, um, I think some of the things that you mentioned, you know, right now, or sitting more on this list, right? The long-range facilities plan is new school models.
Suddenly you're on a list of like twenty-five things.
I know, I, I hear ya. Which is why, I mean, at some point, I do think that they have to merge back together into one set of critical actions, but, um, and the reason full-day 4K for me, I put on kind of both lists, is I feel like we could move faster on some kind of, you know, pilots with full-day 4K, um, which would provide an opportunity for to learn something that could then be built into a, a more long-term future plan. So, it's kind of living in both places.
When I say facilities, I actually am maybe not talking about a long-range facility.
Yeah, what are you thinking?
Talking about a more aggressive and intentional investment in our facilities-
Mm.
Now, or now-ish.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, got it.
Which is a little different than kind of where our schools need to be for the long term and-
Okay.
That's helpful.
I just-
All right, thank you.
We're, we're talking, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll finish off my list here. Um, priority one, I, I do think, uh, the continued focus on advanced coursework is important. Uh, I do think-
Good.
When we talk about, uh, college and community ready, I do think rigor is important. Um, especially the K-8 focus. Because I, I just don't know how you get to high school without being really focused and then be ready to, to, um, deal with it more rigor.
Yeah.
Um, priority two, family partnerships and advocacy. I just don't know that we do family partnerships. I, I, I'm still going to push the, uh, the granular level of, of getting families involved.
Yeah.
Uh, and we talked a little bit about this, is, is when we have, uh, concerns around the district from parents, we always hear from the engaged parents. You know, when, when the room is full, it's full of engaged parents, so we always hear from them.
Yeah.
I would love to hear from the unengaged fam, families. Uh, how do we do that? The families that, for example, uh, that we may have some issues with the kids. Uh, I'd really like to hear from that group.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, how do we do that? How do we get the unengaged, more engaged to? For example, if someone violated a, a real severe, uh, BEP code, I'd like to hear what the parent might have to say about that some. I think we could learn a lot, and, uh, but we never hear from that group. We always hear from the group that's, we really don't need to hear from. They're always the ones that's engaged, but everyone has a right to, uh, um, have a voice. Uh, and so, it'd be great to hear from, from the other part of the, uh, taxpayer base.
Yeah.
Um, the eighth and ninth grade transition, for example, uh, for priority three, I think that's important. We talk about when we have issues in ninth, and, you know, we have issues with our eighth and ninth graders, the ninth graders coming to high school. So, uh, you know, I, I'd like to see, uh, make sure we, uh, focus on that area. And the opportunity of youth, I think all of these have to do with our school culture and climate.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
I do too.
What, what are we going to do there? Uh, we're going down that road now, and so that's, I find, well, that's something that's important to me. You know, what we, what we do with that group of students that's, uh, seem to be struggling.
Good.
So, uh, that's important. Um, so that does it for me.
No, I can comment, Dean.
Uh, yes, I, I've recognized everyone's hands, and I think I know what order we're in. TJ had his hand up next.
Oh, sorry.
And I'm going to be very, very short. I just want to emphasize that, um, that, that when Laura said the behavioral mental health, that I think that last time, um, we had a presentation from Armando, that there was a sense, I, I certainly expressed it, and I sensed it from other board members, that we've done the slow rollout.
Yeah, let's go faster.
Um, there is, there is a time when, uh, these services, whether it's the partnership building bridges or something else, that the equivalent should be, we should be looking at having it available to every student, every school. And I think that time is sometime within the next five years, which is-
Yep, we agree.
What this timeframe of is. So, that's a really big priority for me.
That's great to hear, TJ. That's in alignment with our thinking too.
All right.
Thanks, James. Um, going back to number two-
Yeah.
And talking about the family engagement and partnership and advocacy, I think this is really important. Um, I know I talked with you about, um, the idea of using parent liaisons.
Yeah.
Um, and really, using liaisons or really looking at what we're doing in the Office of OMGE and wrapping around our students. I, I think the fact that we have BRTs, bilingual resource teachers, as well as BRSs, bilingual resource specialists, supporting our families-
Yeah.
That's, that's really empowered those families, and we're seeing better academic outcomes. So, I would like to see something similar for our African-American students, where we actually have folks helping families navigate the systems that their kids are in, working on some of those outside supports that are, can be difficult for other families to garner. And so, but the one thing I don't, I would be not as happy to see is if we employ a lot of people that aren't connected to our communities.
I agree.
I think we need to be bringing in folks that are connected to our school communities, connected to the families, to be filling these roles.
Yeah, I think, again, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because, again, I'm having a hard time in these short little bullets, quite using the right words to describe the idea. Um, but that is, uh, the idea that's behind this bullet, that we have seen some real success with family partnership and advocacy, especially with ELLs, right? There are some, there's something really working there, um, that we're curious about, um, when it comes to African-American parent partnership. I think that's exactly right. So, um, again, we've got to flesh it out more, um, and, um, yeah, but that is precisely the idea that we're after. Mm-hmm.
Right, Nicky.
Um, the one thing I do think that is missing, and I think it maybe even should eventually get near our vision statement, is vocational education.
Ah.
Because I understand that college is excellent.
Yeah.
But we didn't ask all of our kids if they want to go to college. There are plenty who want post-secondary option at a tech school.
Yeah.
There are plenty who want to go into the trades. I just don't think we've focused on that, and we've gotten away from that.
Mm-hmm.
And those are jobs that are very needed.
Yeah.
So, I think that it would fit in well.
Okay, thank you, Nikki.
So, I was thinking back to when we first started this process and what I had indicated, I thought was important to get out of it.
Yeah.
And there were, there were two things. And the first was that we, uh, we're a, at the end of the next five years, we're in a position to identify what really is working.
Yeah.
So that we can then use that to really invest and make substantial progress. And so, I think it's, there's, that, that basically can encompass all of these areas.
Sure can.
But the, the second one is sort of around the same thing. And I bring them up because I think it's really important, um, for the effectiveness and impact of our work. It's how we think and how, the process in which we continuously improve.
Yeah.
Or not.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and so, you're, just your mention of Mondo struck a, a certain nerve with me. Because I don't think, actually, it's been that long. I've been, I was on the board, and to think we're looking at a different curriculum. I'm not saying it's not the right thing to do.
Why did I say that?
Right, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not the right thing to do, but this, to, to me, that type of, it has been long enough, that actually the board should be aware-
Have to examine.
Of something about the effectiveness of a curriculum that we have had now for-
That's right.
Four or five years.
Yeah.
But I don't think it should take four or five years. And, and so, the second point was about our process for continually improving and reassessing and realizing there are no silver bullets, there's no easy answers. This is the hard work. And I know we do a lot of this, but I'm not sure that, um, um, and, and I will say, Avid is the, is my other example of that, is that there's been lots of assessments, it's really good about the, all the information, uh, but I don't, didn't feel like the attention to the African-American outcomes was actually something that our staff was focused at, until I made a, a big deal about it. And, um, and the, and the answer I got initially was, oh, we have our assessments, and the assessments are showing this. I'm like, yes, but if this program was to move the needle for the entire district, and if African-American students as a whole are not benefiting from this program in terms of, uh, enrollment in post-secondary, whether it's a two-year or a four-year,
um, that should be a major thing.
And so, I don't feel that there was that. And that's only one program that I know about, but I know it in depth.
It's very simple, yeah.
And so, that's, I, I, I'm gonna, I, I'd like to have something in here that is about our way-
Mm-hmm.
Of actually continually improving and assessing, because I think that's what it's going to take to really move the needle.
Yeah.
And to understand not only what we focus on, but whatever we're doing, we're really looking at whether it is, in fact, doing what we intended to do.
Yeah.
And we don't just throw it out if he doesn't. We look at, well, what might have to be changed? What can we do? And I know a lot of this work goes on, but I think we have to do a lot more of it.
No doubt, and in our April session, um, that will be the focus of our meeting, is this, uh, like, what are the ways of working that we want to put into place, uh, that will drive decision-making in the next strategic framework? So, that will be, will be fully dedicated to having the discussion that I know you, in particular, Mary, you really want to have. Um, right, because these are- Uh, I know you are, I know, but I like it, I can be that way too. Um, so, I totally get it. These priority areas are the what? Like, what, what, what can we see, are the gaps in our system that need to be addressed? And what you're talking about is how? How do we know, um, it's working? How do we know, uh, to what extent we should bring something to scale and at what pace we should do it? Um, so that'll be our discussion at the next meeting.
All right, fifteen-second comments. TJ?
I want to second what Mary said, and, and would you please, just to the people at this table, that I think that the, whether it's initiative programs or the formal program evaluations, I'm trying to go short, um, that I think that we at this table need to spend more time with, with both what we want to be brought to us, and then what we do with it. And not, not, you know, not a half hour after a PowerPoint, but-
Right.
Two or three meetings to say, let's talk about what the BEP evaluation taught us. And, and, and let's have that as a public conversation among us, and listen to each other, and listen to our staff, and, and be much more on the, on the important areas. So, um, that's part of the ways of working, I think that we as a board need to.
I think it's a great point, TJ, and I think it came up at one of our recent meetings. Um, but I don't know, you guys had a, a, approved a way of working, like, these three-year evaluation cycles, et cetera. It'd be good to go back to that and talk about to the extent to which that's working. Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
Do you have a comment? Any other final comments from the board?
All right, then, uh, then I'll move to Jeremy.
Yeah, very helpful. Thank you, everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Right on time, all right.
You're going to get an update from HR, from Deirdre and Rochelle, I think, on teacher compensation, or maybe Mike, I don't know, whoever's going to do this. And just to let you know that we still have a work group that's meeting to talk about potential changes to the teacher's salary schedule. We have our next meeting on Thursday. And one of the things that we've done at MTI is we've done a survey of our teaching staff to try to get feedback on some of the proposals we're talking about. So we'll be, you know, sharing that feedback when we meet on Thursday and continuing to explore some potential changes to the teacher's salary schedule. And then the last thing, the third thing, really gets to base wages, okay? And particularly the base wage increase. You also are going to be talking about that in the context of your budget and identifying priorities and where money's going. And just to kind of remind folks, the union can still bargain one thing, right? Under Act 10, we still have the ability to bargain base wages. That's the one thing the governor has left us to bargain. Under Act 10, we're restricted to bargaining no more than a cost of living increase, okay? That's what we have bargained the last two years. Two years ago, cost of living, believe it or not, was 0.12%, and that was the base wage increase. Last year it was 1.26%, and that was the base wage increase. This year, the consumer, the price of, cost of living is calculated 2.13%, right? And the budget information that Mike's going to share with you, you know, he'll show that the district's currently budgeting about one-half of a percent. So I just want to make sure that that's on your radar. We have not started bargaining yet, but when we enter bargaining, I can tell you that we will be prioritizing getting employees a cost of living increase again. So I just want to make sure that you had that information in the context of these budget discussions. And so it was a little challenging when bargaining happens after you have already got too deep in your budget discussion. So I want to make sure that you're kind of aware of those issues upfront. That's it, under three minutes. I didn't light anything up at all, but, you know, thank you for your time.
The next item is not on the agenda, but Jen has a special announcement.
Oh, gosh, I do. I just found out some great news that I had to share with everyone, and this is about Laura. She just found out that she got a full ride to the Vanderbilt Ed School. And I know. An offer she hasn't yet accepted. Laura, do you want to say any more about it?
Well, Alex Braylon wrote me a very nice rec. letter, and I will hope to tell him in person, but I basically talked about how they have three national research centers that continue a lot of the work that I've been exposed to here. So I wrote about how it would be great to continue stuff about alternative options, teacher pay, teachers of color, advanced learning. They're doing all that stuff there, too, on like the national level. So, yeah, it would be really exciting.
We are very proud of you. Very, very proud of you.
All right. Okay. Well, it's going to be hard to...
I know.
So we'll, next is recommending approval of the minutes for the Operations Work Group meeting dated November 13, 2017. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Laura, your advisory vote?
Aye.
Okay. Then that is approved 7-0. And then our next agenda item is actually our only agenda, or our last agenda item, and that is 2018-19 budget development.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and invite Mike, Lisa, and Deirdre to join us for our budget presentation. I just want to remind the board that this is our second-to-last input session from the board before delivering on to you the draft preliminary budget in April. So we're looking forward to getting another round of input from you tonight. The budget continues to shape up, and we'll be touching on compensation, which Doug alluded to just a couple minutes ago, and priority actions in the budget. So, Mike, do you want to take it away?
Sure. Thanks, Jen. I'm happy to be joined by Lisa and Deirdre tonight. So we have a triple feature budget presentation. Well, I'll do the budget overview, and assuming that goes reasonably well, we will move on to compensation plan and then on to strategic priority actions. So we are seeking board input as we cover these topics, hopefully, you know, favorable complementary input. If it's not, that's okay, too. Either way, will work for us. And the idea here, of course, is that we're going to bring you a preliminary draft budget next month in April. And then even then, I want to emphasize that you've still got the April-June window to shape that budget as deliberations continue, okay? So with that, this budget timeline shows you the, sort of the trail that we've been on since November. I really wish this went back to November of '16, because that's when the community passed the referendum to exceed revenue limits, which will play a major role in the budget for next year. If we didn't have that additional revenue authority, tonight's discussion would be much different and much less favorable. So I think we've said this multiple times, but thank you again to the community for their support of that referendum. The payoff comes in, the decisions that the board will make next year and the year after that as well. So we're in March. The items that will follow this presentation in April, that's when you'll see the employee benefit strategy, and we'll wrap up whatever is open on either priority actions or on compensation, or really any other topic, before we spend the final three weeks of April actually putting the budget document together. So let me start out with the high-level budget strategy, and then we'll pause, and then we'll move on to the other sections of the budget. So the high-level budget strategy really starts with the revenue side of the equation. And we have two positive factors and one negative factor to kind of keep in mind as you listen to tonight's discussion and really the whole budget discussion. The two positive factors that we have going for us in the budget for next year are, one, that we'll receive $204 per pupil in additional state per pupil aid. Every school district in the state gets that. And for us, it's about $5.6 million, or about maybe 1.6% increase in overall revenues. In fact, for most school districts, the story kind of ends there. They get that money and they live with it, one way or another, right? Our situation's a little more involved. We have a second positive factor, which is the $8 million of additional revenue authority that I just mentioned. I should point out, of course, that $8 million is local taxation, so, you know, there's that to consider as well. And then the negative factor is state equalization aid, the sharing of the burden of running these schools, shared between the state and the local taxpayer. We expect to lose somewhere between 13% to 15% of our equalization aid next year. We lost 11 and 1/2 this year. That will result in about a $7 million shift from state aid to local taxpayers. So here's where it all comes together. If we have an equalization aid loss of $7 million, and we use the $8 million of additional authority we have, we're looking at a tax levy that goes up around $15 million, or about 5%, a little over 5%. And that's higher than we have generally proposed to the board, certainly higher than we proposed in March. And so the test will be, how much of that levy authority do you really need or want to use? And how do you balance your expenditures against that? So that's kind of the, that's really the whole framework. This pie chart shows some of the spending decisions that will impact your tax levy We showed a version of this in January at this meeting, excuse me, in February at this meeting. So this is a kind of a high-level view. It's the one we've been working on. And our tax levy story has evolved from our original drafts in November, December. We were under 4%, 3.9 roughly. In January, February, we updated this to reflect the local burden of funding these independent charter schools. We are estimating, because we still don't know their enrollment, we're estimating an additional $1.5 million that will go on our tax levy to support those schools. And that brought our overall tax levy to about 4.5%. Yeah? TJ?
Is that estimate based on approximately $8,500 per student? And then are we doing an adjustment to the authority because we receive about $11,500 per student in new authority for each of those students also, do we not?
Over time, yes. As you know, revenue takes three years to fold in.
Thank you. Wrong time to ask the question. I'll ask it next year.
Okay. So, okay, that's right. You'll have plenty of time to get after the 2X charters with us. So this is how we've been thinking about the budget. Enrollment, either steady or very slight decrease. I think Andrew's department is projecting about a 45-student decrease next year. Total level, or level total staffing, we talked about that last month, which you would expect with level enrollment. Narrower priority actions, you'll see those tonight. Compensation options, you'll hear those tonight. We've updated this 2X charter with our best estimate as of now. And then a last piece of our thinking, at least in March, is that we used, in this version, $5 million of your $8 million of revenue authority, five out of the $8 million. We left $3 million on the table in order to keep a tax levy at around 4.5% and also order to preserve our aid eligibility for the following year and some flexibility for the following year. Ultimately, the board has to make that call. That levy can go up if you need to fund more than we're showing here. It can go down if you choose to fund less than we've shown here.
Could you say more about the state aid eligibility impact? The state aid eligibility?
Yeah. So we get penalized in our state aid formula for two things, one of which we can't really control, which is our tax base per pupil. And Madison tax base is growing rapidly and our enrollment isn't, so our tax base per pupil is really climbing, which means Madison looks wealthier as a school district compared to other school districts across the state, which means our equalization aid begins to get shifted elsewhere. The other thing we get penalized for is spending over the state average per pupil. Now, we have $8 million of additional revenue authority. Most school districts don't. And if we use it, our cost per pupil relative to the state will go up, costing us more equalization aid. That's the idea. So this is a simplified pie chart. The key factors here are the basic compensation plan, the additive compensation plan, and just get through the pie, then I'll pause, the benefits placeholder, the 2X charters, priority actions, and then other budget factors. Nikki?
Yes. After what Doug stated, what would a cost of living increase have an effect on us?
Yeah. This budget has a base or traditional or standard comp plan that includes, among steps, lanes, it also includes base wage at 1/2%. As Doug pointed out, the maximum would be about 2.13, I believe. That's an increase of 1.6, which is $3 million additional dollars.
So I would say, just again, to move through and then have an overall budget discussion as...
Sure. Okay. I'm almost through wrapping this up. This is an internal sheet that we use on how we think about the budget. It's really here just to sort of reinforce the same concepts that I just described. In this model, we work from the upper left. Pick a tax levy. Move to the upper right, what does that tell you about your revenue picture? And then down below are the boxes or the investments that you can make that align with that authority. And in this case, you can see the things that are built in include the compensation plan, the priority actions, the 2X charters, and so on. We run these like newspapers, right? Change the assumptions, you run the model. And at some point, we're all going to agree on what we want to do. It's not going to happen in March, it shouldn't probably happen in June. Okay. So, you know, we wanted to comment briefly here on the tax levy estimate at 4.58%. We didn't want to just put that out there as if it were no big deal. It is a big deal. We wanted to explain the factors behind this. And this is what's so frustrating about K-12 finance. It's 60% of this tax levy is out of your control. It's driven by equalization aid losses and the 2X charters. Our tax levy would be about 2% if all other factors were left alone, or if those two factors were taken out of the equation. So you've got, you know, multiple things driving your tax levy. And really, the only piece that you can control is the, kind of the all-other category. And so you get this compounding of factors that puts us in a tough position. I will also say, though, that offsetting this is the very strong growth in the Madison tax base, which is helpful. We don't want to take advantage of that, but it is helpful. And the other thing is, this is early. This is not exactly worst-case planning, but it's certainly cautious planning. We could do better on equalization aid. It might not be as gloomy as we're saying, but, you know, we have to plan this way. And the 2X charters, depending on their enrollment, it might not be a million and 1/2, like it might be less, at least in the first year. So I want to just emphasize that we feel it's our job to position the board in such a way that we give you, you know, the news as it could be, you know, sort of cautiously, and hope that the forecast improves. And if it, my sense is that it could be, it could improve by a quarter to a half a percent on the levy. That's kind of your range at this point. So those are the big factors to keep in mind. How much of that levy authority do you want to use? How much tax rate increase can you handle? And what package of investments do you want to fit under those choices? So I'll pause there, and if there are questions, we'll take them on. Otherwise, we'll move on to the comp plan.
Okay. And I would preview that by saying, since the next thing is a preview of the employee compensation concepts, is any questions regarding that? I think we should just wait until after we preview that. But Anna?
My question is, in what we've been hearing is that the governor and perhaps the legislators are proposing some additional funding for security measures, as well as maybe some support for mental health supports within the school. So where is that going to fall, if that actually comes to fruition, where would that fit into
Good question. We've been hearing the same things, and I imagine it would fall in two ways. One, it would be a sort of a special revenue, a categorical aid, meaning an aid reserved for a specific purpose. And then you'd match it with appropriate expenditures along the lines that it was intended. And it could help us. It could help us both in terms of our safety and security work and mental health in schools.
So if it comes in as like a categorical aid, then we won't be getting penalized because of the tertiary?
Correct.
Okay, all right, great.
And since every district would get it, I assume, I think we all move in tandem with each other.
TJ?
What percentage is the benefit increase that's...
Displacement?
So what percentage of increases that?
Yeah, that $2.5 million slice of the pie, it's about 4%.
Okay, so that's, because, I mean, in the past, we've talked, you know, 4%, 5%, 3% kind of things.
Right.
Kind of trying to fit those two.
Right, right. And we've been in negotiations with our two HMOs. Our labor representatives joined us, and we've had some, I think, the State Department calls that frank and honest exchanges. And I think we're going to be fine. I think we're going to, it's going to fit within its, it's going to stay in its lane. That's our prediction.
Mike and Deirdre, when is, when do you think we'll have that solid?
April Operations Work Group.
April.
Yep.
Any other questions on the, what Mike has presented outside of the compensation area? Okay. Moving on to Deirdre.
Pass the baton. So just to remind the board, we presented kind of our initial thinking at the November Operations Work Group, and since then, we've been working with several employee groups around some of the compensation concepts that we're going to share tonight.
Okay, Deirdre, could we pause for a second? Anna?
Sure. I just wanted to disclose, since my husband is a teacher in the district, I will be removing myself from the table in this discussion. myself from the table in this discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Deirdre? Sorry. That's okay.
For the interruption.
So as we dig into, continue to dig into the compensation work, both on the teacher, professional, and administrator side, we've always wanted to kind of keep these goals front and center. So it's really part of our plan to put together a strategy and a plan that is obviously competitive. We want to be able to engage and retain employees and at the same time, have the opportunity to recruit and select high-quality staff and ultimately have our compensation plan be financially sustainable. So as we look at the three phases that we have outlined here, just a reminder again, when we talked initially about compensation, we did share with you all that we felt like this was a longer process, that we were not going to be able to kind of complete all of the compensation initiatives that we would want to do in just one year. So this is really kind of highlighting what we're thinking about in terms of our phases. And again, we've worked with our employee groups, and these are some of the kind of bigger things that have been bubbling to the surface. So as the Phase One component, looking at hard-to-fill, which is connected to our cross-cat and bilingual teaching staff, we presented that as an option back in November. The board had some interest in that, so we continued to dig into that area, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in a minute. And looking at Phase Two, we want to continue working with our employee groups around developing alternatives to the traditional lane and step advancement on the salary schedule related to professional development. So Jen mentioned things about teacher, teacher leader, and principal pipelines, really going back to this concept of our emerging leader tracks and teacher leader tracks and spending some time really digging into that and planning and developing professional development that's aligned to that as well. And then looking at our Phase Three, we shared with the board some salary curve options early on, and we want to continue to kind of promote this idea of retention and career earning potential. And so we'll continue to be looking at that as well and what might that look like for our teaching staff and others going forward. So that would be a Phase Three component to consider. And so Mike has alluded to some of this already, but we thought it would be important to ground the board in some of what we're calling the standard compensation components. These are the things that are, that we've pretty much had as placeholders to all regular staff in our budget. So when we're talking about the standard step advancement on the current salary schedules, that comes at a $4.2 million investment. The lane movement is about $400,000, and our base wage, as Mike mentioned again, for this particular model, we've put in a half a percent for base wage. We have the option, obviously, of going up to as much as 2.13%. And as you've heard already, that is subject to bargaining. So that will happen later this year. We'll be engaging in that work. And in addition to that...
Could you just really briefly explain what a step is and what a lane is, so everybody has a good understanding of that?
Yeah. So stepping is the annual movement that somebody could make on the salary schedule from one year to the next. So that is, when we're looking at a teacher's salary schedule, it is the vertical movement that somebody might make on a salary schedule. And then lane movement is the track movement across. So, and it could be connected to credit advancement and so on.
Yeah. One is based on tenure and time. The other is based on accumulating...
Getting a master's or going forward.
Yes. That's correct.
So everybody understands.
So I think one important note here, and Mike already touched on it again as well, is just the amount that we've kind of budgeted for our health insurance renewal. So we have a reserve of about 2.5 million to kind of preserve the existing benefits that we currently have. So when you're looking at all of the standard compensation components, you're obviously over eight million dollars in total compensation investment for staff. So pretty important investment. And then we move into the additive compensation options, which our team has been working on with the employee groups over the last four to five months. So these are really targeted investments that we are considering to address some very specific needs. And the ones that are highlighted here are the ones that obviously have a budget impact. So when we're looking at, on the teacher's salary schedule, this part-time full-step concept is really the opportunity for people to move along the salary schedule, whether you're part-time or full-time annually. So prior to that, we used to have staff that would only get credit for, recognized for half of a step, and we want to just acknowledge, whether you've been here full-time or part-time, for you to move on that salary schedule on an annual basis. Also on the teacher's salary schedule is this cross-categorical and bilingual stipend. So we really want to incent folks that are fully licensed in this area. These are too hard-to-fill position areas that we have currently in the district, and we've shared some of this data with you in the past, and we've got it in this presentation as well. And the idea here is to support those folks that are fully licensed in this area to continue working in these two specific areas, since they are areas that are shortage and hard-to-fill. When we're moving to the professionals and administrators, that 40,000 realignment, again, is this similar concept to this part-time full-step for the teacher's salary schedule. It's really allowing people to move annually on that salary schedule without having to be frozen at any point. In addition to that, what's included in that price tag as well is the fact that we have currently 25 different salary schedules, and we're looking to condense those schedules to about eight and really kind of adjust so that those particular job positions are condensed into a very simple, simplified eight or nine categories. And so there's some adjustment that would happen specifically in that realignment as well. And then moving on to the principal salary schedule, we have had currently and historically, our salary schedules for our principals have been designed around elementary, middle, and high, and we're really looking at the idea of moving away from that and into this concept of small, medium, and large. We know that the elementary, middle, and high has created some inequities based on school size. We have some elementary schools that are fairly large and larger than our middle schools, and our principals are not being adequately compensated based on that level, that size, and that complexity. So we want to be able to do some realignment there as well. This is just the data that's going back specifically to the hard-to-fill positions. We shared this with the board earlier this year, which is part of the reason why this is an area of focus for us. We have our turnover rates in our cross-cat and bilingual areas fairly high, and the number of folks that are on emergency licenses in these two categories increased as well. Now, shifting to our employee handbook, these are the two pending compensation issues that came out of that handbook process. And again, we did some good work around the $15 an hour for the EA salary schedules, but the kind of unintended consequence around that was that compression of that particular salary schedule in addition to creating this freeze where folks would have to sit and not be able to advance for up to six years. So the solution is to rebuild that salary schedule, giving folks the opportunity to expand that compression and also move along that schedule sooner at an impact of about $250,000. And then the other item that came up in those handbook discussions was the long-term sub-rate. We have a rate that is less than surrounding districts. We're looking to just increase that to be more competitive, and that comes at an additional cost of about $150,000. So that is where we are in terms of the work that we've done. And again, just connecting back to the fact that we've worked with the employee groups for the last four or five months on this particular compensation components, and we've had good work up to this point, and this is our best thinking thus far.
Okay. TJ?
First off, I want to say that I will not be discussing deliberately interacting in any way on the EA salary thing, and so I don't want to pull away from the table because I do have questions about other pieces here. So it's just one recusing on that for conflicts of interest. Question on the principal piece. I applaud you moving in this direction. Thank you for it. Is that figure there a net figure, meaning are there unfilled positions now that currently would be slotted at X, which will be slotted at X minus 10% or something next year? And I realize that people in existing positions, we're not going to cut their current salaries. But we do have a number of interim people, and we have perhaps other openings where we'd be hiring new principals. And so I guess, is that a net figure or is that a all additional?
That is a good question. I don't have the answer to that. Or Rochelle might have the answer to that.
Would you like me to come forward?
That would be swell. Thank you.
Or you could say net. Or...
It's a combination of both. So the pieces, it's a net for all active principals, not in an interim role. So the interim roles are pulled out separately because they're an interim. If they get hired into a permanent role, then we would use this new calculation to replace them higher. Vice versa, if someone were to leave, let's say in a middle school, that moves to a small school, we're calculating it right now, going from a middle school to a middle-size because we don't want them to go backwards. But we don't know if they're going to leave or not, so we're not taking that into consideration.
But there is a possibility that some positions currently, some, School Y is currently filled at $100,000. Next year, it's possible that School Y might be filled at $90,000.
Correct.
It's also possible that it might be filled at 110...
Correct.
On the characteristics of school. Okay. That's, what I was looking for is, I was looking for, are we, can we experience savings as well as increases in this move? And that, and it sounds like that that might be there, and this may account, the dollar figure put here, the budget figure, may account for some of that.
Potential.
Got it. Got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other question is about the hard-to-fill positions, and it's kind of a series of questions, and some of them are simple, and then some of them are more just, can you tell us more kind of questions?
You bet.
The simple one is, approximately how many people are we talking about?
That are in the, in the positions?
Who would be eligible for this hard-to-fill bonus or whatever, power structure?
Right. So it is, it is the folks that are fully licensed in both bilingual and CC. And we currently have 325 CC staff, 226 bilingual staff. I don't have the emergency license folks broken out of that number.
Oh, so those would have to be pulled out.
Yeah. So we're looking at probably, for CC staff, we're looking at probably about 275. And for bilingual, we're looking probably at about 125.
So that's a very substantial dollar per person. It's over, probably close to $2,000 annually per person. Okay. That's gives someone a ballpark. If someone, second question, also simple. If someone is dual-licensed, cross-categorical, and bilingual, would they be eligible for two bonuses?
This is a tricky question.
Yes.
We do, and very valued in our district. Those are, those are extra hard-to-fill positions.
Yes. And we, we have been asking ourselves that question as well.
Okay.
And we haven't really, we haven't landed on a definitive answer, but it is part of the conversation, and we will need to kind of finalize and be sure that we're, and there aren't, I mean, there aren't obviously that many that are. There are a handful, so we could, we could manage that. But yes, we, it is on, yep.
TJ, I'd like to stand on that point for a second. So Deirdre, with regards to that, that average amount, it obviously is a substantial amount. Can you refresh our memories? Because when we talked about this and the board supported it, you had backed it up with some data about where we stood compared to other districts. Am I remembering correctly? Can you talk about how you came to this amount?
Yeah. So we, most of the other districts, we came to this amount around a stipend in particular because we want to be able to have the flexibility of making some changes if we need to, right? So we did not want to take a very specific amount. When we presented earlier, we were looking more at the concept of advanced placement on the salary schedule, which meant that those dollars were there and they were permanent, right? So in these discussions over the last several months, there has been support and more agreements around this concept of a stipend. Now, there are other districts that are doing similar things. They're less, they're not as, they're not being as forthright in terms of what they're doing. We do know that they're advanced placing, folks, and that they're using that opportunity to negotiate salary upfront. We don't, we don't have any information on other districts that are using a stipend in particular. Now, we've gotten, we have some surveys out and some information out right now because we want to try to be able to gather that. But right now, we do not have a lot of information on what other districts are doing. There just isn't a lot of data.
TJ?
Two comments and then kind of the real general question. One comment is that my comfort level would be a little less per person, just in terms of investing, and especially when we have issues around base wage still open and things like that. So that's a comment. The second comment is that my, that in terms of structuring the stipend, I would have a preference for something where it is geared toward retention and that perhaps one way to do this would be to have the stipend get bigger year in and year out kind of thing as opposed to, you know, your first, the first year you're part of this program, you get a stipend of $900. The second year, you get 11.
Sure.
And something like that, because I don't want mercenaries collecting this money. I want people who are committed to our district. And I know that there's no way you can guarantee that, but anyway, any creativity we can have in structuring that would increase that likelihood would be very, very welcome. And then the open question is, can you talk a little bit more about how you're thinking of structuring it? You've already started this in response to Mary's question, but just, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate the feedback around the kind of growing into a particular stipend. And we also have concerns about the retention piece, which is part of the reason why when, as we're doing this work, one of the focuses is going to be around the data collection piece and really understanding, like, who is currently in the position and being able to collect that data over a three-year period of time and to be able to study that year in and year out, right? I mean, it is important for us as we're kind of pioneering into this, into this realm of stipends, that we actually know that it is having the impact that we want it to have, right? So part of, you know, the major bulk of our work is the behind-the-scenes work around who is it that we're retaining? Is it actually having an impact on our turnover? And the, in addition to that, really, the quality. We've got some folks that are on emergency licenses right now. We would love to know if this actually is having an impact on them finishing up their credit requirements and getting their full license, right? So those are the things that we're thinking about in terms of...
That's what they do.
That's right. Yeah. So those are the things that we're thinking about, and certainly the data that we need, that we know that we need to collect over the next years.
Deirdre, when would the stipend be paid?
So we thought about that, too. So, we thought about that, too. I think, really, where, at least in my opinion, where majority of the consensus has come around in the smaller group, and we've talked about that, is really after the, the year of service, right? So we're looking at these folks having, being in that role. Once you've completed that, you have a stipend that's at the end of that particular year.
It makes sense. I'm a little concerned that the impact that it will have in retaining teachers for the start of the next school year. So if this is this late, I, and we saw, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that, that the turnover rate was something like 30% on the cross-categorical. And with that type of, right, with those type of 25%, I think it's important that it impacts this next school year. And how will we communicate that to those, to those teachers to have that impact immediately?
Right. Yeah, so we're running into both of those issues. Do you pay it early on and then run the risk, right? Or do you pay it at the back end?
You could do half and half.
Yep, yep, certainly could.
Okay. Questions on the compensation at all? Okay, then we're moving on to priority act.
So maybe just to carry the point, I mean, I think, I would be curious, some mechanisms, if there have been any discussed. I don't want to interrupt kind of the process you've got with the various groups that I think is, sounds like is working. But if there are options on making something tied to retention, right? I mean, it could be a long-term incentive plan, too, instead of a short-term. So there are, I think, a variety of creative options that we could at least look at. My, I guess my only question would just be, you know, are there any, kind of, if you could add some color about some of the dialogue you've had with your working groups so far? Are there any areas that have been sticking points, or, you know, you're getting, you wish we could do more, or something different? Just give some color on what that dialogue has been like?
Yeah, go back to the original slide I showed you back in November. That had a $10 million price tag on it, where we could do everything, right? I think, I think what, one of the things that I've been hearing that's come out of the groups that we've talked with is just wanting general support for the work, but really emphasizing, hopefully, this is just the beginning, right? Like, there's continued work that, that staff want to be able to see as it relates to, you know, the ideas around the salary curve, the ideas around the pipeline issues, like all of that. So knowing that we have a finite amount to work with this year, and time, and resource capacity for all of the folks that are kind of volunteering to do this work, that this is a continuation, right? And that this is continued work that, that people want to see us digging into and making an impact on. So all of those concepts were, in some way, shape, or form, were well-received. It's just a matter of being able to build out and find consensus on those.
And, and the kind of variable investment across those concepts, has that been broadly well-received, or, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think with what we have to work with, obviously, you know, when we, as we got farther into this process, and we knew really the amount that we were working with, in some instances, it made it harder, and sometimes it made it easier just to, to work through some of that. But the group was, all of the groups, very engaged and supportive of us moving forward on, on the initiatives. And again, you know, I mean, I think it comes down to, unfortunately, the, the having to pick and choose, right? A lot of great ideas, a lot of opportunity to support engagement and retention, and really build on kind of this talent management strategy that we're trying to build on. And so our hope is that we can just, we can continue to work on this over a period of time.
Okay, so, one more?
Yep. Just was asking about the survey that Doug had mentioned. Will we have visibility into that as well, or will that not be...
Yeah, I think so. We wanted to be able to have that work group that actually put that out. Have an opportunity to take a look at that survey, have some discussion, and really come to some consensus around if there are additional recommendations, or things that we should be thinking about differently as we look at that information. But, yeah, I think that's... James?
Yeah. At some point, will we, you get back, and we'll come back and refresh our memory on, for example, the turnover here. It sounds as though we are saying that the salary increase or change in the salary schedule will somehow have a positive impact on, on the turnover. And my question is, do we know that it's salary-driven, this turnover? I think earlier, our earlier conversation was around, you know, what are some of the impacts, the other impacts that may be affecting this turnover? So, and most of the presentation here is about the salary impact.
Yeah.
And we can raise, we can increase salary and have very little impact on turnover. And so, seems as though we need to be able to talk about the determinants, and what kind of impact we expect to have with the, with these increases. Because if the goal is to impact turnover, then we'll need to talk about what the determinants are. There may be several determinants that's impacting this, and not just...
Yes, yeah. And I think it's important, and I think we talked about this in previous operations work groups, and really presenting this part of, of the work that we're doing around engagement and retention, is just knowing that the salary piece is just one piece of the work, but there are certainly other aspects of that that are going to be important for us, right? And so we're not, we're not betting that this is going to be the only thing, but being able to look at kind of a, a package of ideas or options for us to, to go forward, right? So when we, we're thinking about some of the work that we're going to be doing with Forward Madison around tackling this licenser, licensure issue, and having options for people to get their license on an accelerated track. We already have a grow our own program, and we're working with our UW partnership, where we're, we're working on that, and we want people to be fully licensed. Part of that Forward Madison work is around teacher mentoring as well. So, and I think we're aware of the fact that this is one part of, like, a bigger strategy. And that the salary piece is not going to be the only thing that is going to impact turnover. Dean?
Yeah, thanks. I don't know how many long-term subs we have, but there seems to, there would suggest that there's a budget savings there, because the original position was budgeted for a full-time, permanent employee. So there's some savings going on somewhere in there. And what I would like to see as an example, as that as an example, is there, I'd like to see some strategies and some suggestions to lower the gap between what the available COLA and what we're offering. If you don't have a lane or a step increase, and you're left, just left with the COLA, you're kind of falling behind. So if there's a way to, to get that closer to what's available, I'd like to see what your thoughts are on that. And maybe opportunities to look where there's some rollover savings from this year.
I know, I can sense that Mary is wanting to move on to the next section.
No, I, I actually, I had paused, and no one jumped in, so of course, we were going to move on. But I think, yeah, if everyone has a chance to, please jump in.
Let me just say one thing, then. I'm back on your comment, James, about the determinants of the turnover. I think that's very important. And I think we're convinced that pay is part of it. But we do owe you a clear sense of what those multiple determinants are, and the strategies associated with them. So I just, I want to acknowledge that. Let's move on, then.
Okay, well, I'll take up the third part of the relay. The baton has been passed over to me to talk a little bit about...
Let me choose that.
So I am going to take just a few minutes to preview our initial thinking on the priority actions as we're moving forward. So this is the first look. We'd like to get a sense from you if we're on the right track here, and get some feedback from you. I'll provide some high-level highlights. And hopefully, these won't be too big of a surprise. We've had lots of conversation about this with other people. You've heard some, some of this conversation in instructional work groups. So just want to give you a sense of where we're at with this. We took a new approach. As you can probably tell, we're bringing forth five areas of priority actions this year. We feel like these are focused, based on a need that we have, that we have identified, and just want to be sure that we're on the right track with you in these areas. And as the note says on the slide, the highlighted pieces of this, and there are just a few, are highlighted for discussion around early approval related to maximizing our early hiring strategy, or to keep the momentum going in areas where schools are expecting that. So the first of the five priority areas is related to our early college STEM Academy, or EXSA, as we like to affectionately call it, where the need is really evident to engage a more diverse group of students in STEM-related curriculum and post-secondary opportunities. So this priority action really represents our commitment to the work that we've done with Madison College and our partnership with them. And the amount that you see here really is related to the first year's tuition for a group of up to 25 high school students.
You know, actually, Lisa, I think we'll stop at each one.
Sure, of course.
It says, okay.
Of course. So, I don't have any questions on this one. I had to nomenclate your question. Some of the things are highlighted yellow, and some of them are not.
Yeah, that's, those are the ones for early budget consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
March or April board meetings, they'd like approval.
Great.
But it was good, because we wanted to pause, anyway. So, any, any comments or questions on, on EXSA?
I do actually have a question.
Okay.
So I kind of struggled with a couple of these, because they don't map to what our previous conversation was, which is the priority actions for our strategic framework, most of which are already underway. And there are, I think, three on the list here, maybe two, that aren't on the other list. And so if we're only going to pick five things that we're going to invest more in, I would really hope that they're on our list for the next five years as some of the top 10, 15 most important things for us.
Yeah, I did the same mapping, but my mapping doesn't come out like yours. And I think that's just a matter of me, the way that I named it. So we touched about pathways of the programs. I mentioned early college STEM academy in the previous discussion. This is part of our, we consider this part of our high school pathways and programs.
But to your point, they should align. Important.
Laura?
So these are, each of these things are, would be like the sub-bullet points of the areas, like the three things in bold that we just talked about in the last meeting? Okay.
Dean?
Yeah, this is an area that I've been wondering if we could get some financial support from funders. This is a hot thing that everybody wants people to get into, and we've got grant writers, we've got grants for other programs that we started. Is, have we asked our grant writers to search around, see if there's any support for getting some support to get this thing up and running? And 175 isn't a whole lot to ask for in a, in a program that has a lot of potential like this. Can we raise some money to help pay, offset the costs, is what I'm asking. Now, that's more probably a suggestion than a question.
Yeah.
But I think there's something, we got a pretty interesting, brand-new program that covers what all people are kind of yelling at us to do. Every school district's getting yelled at to do this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, maybe there's...
Okay, so Dean, just, did you want to respond?
Yeah, I have to say, it's a, it's a great question, Dean. It hasn't been on our shortlist for fundraising, and it's certainly something we can think about. Our grant writers always looking for things, opportunities that align with the work that we're doing as a school district. So, point taken. But for now, we don't think we should be relying on fundraising dollars to get the work done.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, then, Lisa, thank you.
Sure. So the next priority area that we've outlined for you is our technology plan. And this is a priority action for which we would be seeking early approval, as the yellow highlight shows there. So this represents our fourth cohort of schools. It provides the devices and the opportunity to successfully integrate technology into instruction. Our new director of instructional technology, TJ McCray, has really been very thoughtful about really the approach that we're using with the cohorts moving forward. And you received something a while ago in the board packet around our new take-home policy that we'll be talking about, and some of the language and tools and strategies we're using with principals to make sure that these devices that will be used one-to-one and take home for some students occurs within the policy and within the practices at the school level.
Yeah, and I'll just chime in real quick to say, when it comes to our previous discussion on the priority areas, the technology plan, historically in our district, hasn't been its own priority area. It kind of undergirds all of them. It helps us execute the work. I mean, it's a tool, which is why you don't see this listed as one of the priorities in the previous discussion. It undergirds everything that we do.
Nikki?
Just a question that I've heard from some parents on the ability of taking home Chromebooks. They were worried that YouTube and other things that are used for class could be gotten into. And they did ask that I bring that up of, are there going to be any software blockers where certain things could only be used at certain times?
We can certainly follow up with you on that, Nikki. This is specifically about the take-home policy that we've been working on. Happy to get that information for you.
Thank you. TJ?
I just want to follow up in the context of the ways of working discussion we had at our prior meeting.
Yeah.
We had a monitoring report on, on the tech plan in G2, and G1 and G2 schools primarily back in September, October, a long time ago. And as a board, that was never, it was, appeared in the packet, it was never reformed, we never discussed it. It wasn't the most positive of reports. And it is due, and the tech plan is due for evaluation next year, I believe, in, in the three-year cycle. And so just kind of calling this as not necessarily a budget item to be pulled at this time, but to remind us on ways of working that, as we look at our priorities and we look at what's working and what's not working, that this is something that is, we need to be on top of.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead, Kay.
I, just to maybe add on to that, I would love to see how we believe this is impacting our educational outcomes, and, so that would be kind of outcome-focused, and then the other would be just around replacement assets, and what that kind of looks like, what that looks like across schools right now. I mean, we don't, this budget, what we are hearing is, we're okay, and we have under $2 million, a little over $1 million to invest incrementally in something, right? So if we're going to choose to use a significant chunk of it on this, then I think we need to believe that it's the most important thing for us to, to do. So I don't know, I guess I would like to see some of that information. And I wasn't on the board when the earlier one was shared, so maybe we could revive it, but...
I'm happy to send out the tech plan report that we discussed in fall of, not this past fall, but the fall before. Let's do that. And, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it more.
Okay. I'll say, the visits that I've done to schools this year, without me specifically eliciting feedback on the, on, on the devices for those schools that are G1, G2, G3 schools, I get overall, just... just really incredibly positive feedback that people give just about engaging students and how it gives the teachers new tools in which to help students learn. And I think at this point, it would be really dangerous to not continue because you would leave some schools with them and some schools without them. I guess I don't quite understand why we... This actually comes to us every year rather than being built into the budget. I don't personally... I'm with you, Kate. I don't personally feel it should necessarily be a priority action. We voted on the plan. If we don't want to take it out of the budget, I believe it should be based, built into the budget almost. Anna?
My question around the take-home with the Chromebooks. Do we have a sense of... So, who is that going to apply to? What age level students?
So, the age level of students is fifth grade and then sixth through ninth graders that will have the devices.
Okay. And then, is that... Have we done research to figure out whether kids will have access to Wi-Fi to utilize those Chromebooks? And if... I would just want to make sure because I don't think we want it, like, worsen gaps that already exist.
Oh, yeah. We can... It sounds like there's some interest in the take-home policy. We'll figure out to make... It was sent to you recently, but we'll find some time to make sure to answer your questions specifically on the take-home policy. Can I go on to that comment, Mary? Yeah, it's interesting to me. I'm just observing, when we decided on this very narrow set of priority actions, much more narrow than we've ever brought to the board when it comes to the budget, we went back and forth on the tech plan, in part because we do feel like it's more of a... It's kind of a way of working. It's an instructional tool that we think that every student and teacher should have available to them to use flexibly. And yeah, which... So, I just want to name the struggle. But we know it... I think why it ultimately ended up on this list is because of the dollar amount being significant. I mean, we don't want to make any assumptions. We don't want it to appear to be buried somehow. It's just... It's a significant investment that we've decided to make year over year to get us up to a level that we can sustain over time. So, just a reminder of kind of the history. Still, we'll send you guys the results of that last review so that you have a more historical perspective on the reason we've decided to go forward with scaling the integration of technology over time.
Is there a question on the climate survey about the use of technology?
I don't think so. No. Oh, there's a... The tech plan has its own survey, true. And we have the annual monitoring report, which you just got, which I think has some of those... Some information there. But it's not in the big climate survey.
Okay.
It's handled separately.
Okay. Lisa?
Okay, moving on to the next priority area is really an intentional priority area focused on middle schools and around family engagement. And we've heard about this importance from you all over the past several months and are really getting after this idea of customizing a family engagement strategy for middle schools, as you can see, to both develop youth leadership and to really invest in family partnerships in three of our middle schools. So, as much as... I said this this afternoon, as much as what happens during those middle school years, right, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, is really important for those adolescents. When thinking about this strategy, we were also thinking about what happens for fifth graders who transition in and the importance of really having strong relationships with families and strong engagement strategies. And also, what happens when families transition from middle school to high school? So, kind of getting at both of those ends, the transition in, the transition out, and then also what happens during the years that those adolescents are with us. So, that's sort of the backdrop on this proposal.
And I would just highlight that this is meant to align with the second priority area that we scoped out, that sub-bullet around family partnership and advocacy.
Nikki?
I just want to say thank you on this particular one. I know that middle school has been an issue. It's where we aren't meeting expectations. I think that parents... This is in a time of emotional change, like massive emotional change with students. I think if any place that we need to probably double down, it would be middle school because you're already dealing with transitions, changes, friends, social. I think we need to get the families involved.
Teacher?
Got some questions. How would the schools be selected?
So, selection is really based on schools that have been working in this area already, sort of demonstrating a readiness for this and a willingness to really support and bring on this new role. We have actually a pretty good idea of who we think those schools are based on the work that we've done with them already.
And what about schools that have already used their own budget for family liaison roles and things like that? Will they be eligible for this allotment? And in which case, that would free up FTE at their school otherwise?
That would be something that we would need to continue to talk about. Some schools have allocated out of Title I or out of local budget parent liaison, and we would want to be thoughtful about that as we move forward with this as well. Good point.
And these are non-union professional positions?
I think... What did we decide, Michelle?
That was a question.
They're in the teacher... No, they're in the teacher unit. Yeah, they're not non-union professional. They would be in the teacher unit, right.
Then would they be required to be licensed educators?
If they're in the teacher unit, they would... Jeri, help me with this. It would... You'd have to establish a license to go with the teacher unit, right? We would just have to figure out what the licensure would be.
Are minority service coordinators in the teacher unit?
Michelle, do you want to...
I want to see them up.
Yep.
So, it is the only position that's in that unit that's not licensed? It's a... But it is in the teacher unit. But it is the parent liaison position, yes, so...
Now, we currently have some parent liaisons who are in the EA and some that are non-union professionals.
Yeah, we're working that.
And some that... You get what I'm getting at here.
Yeah, we totally do. Yep.
So, this role was envisioned to be as similar to the high school multicultural services coordinators who are classified in the teacher unit but do not have to have a teacher license. So, they follow kind of the same break schedule and as... In the teacher unit, but are not... They're the one position that doesn't have the same licensing requirement, different than the parent liaisons who sit in the EA unit.
But if you're not licensed, would that mean then you would technically be enough if you're not qualified to be licensed, correct?
Except for they've been absorbed into the teacher unit for bargaining purposes.
Yeah. Okay, that I didn't know.
And that's... And I guess that if... I would like to see this rationalized in some way or at least proposals to rationalize it. I might not like the proposals, but I'd like to see them.
Well, and just so you know, behind the scenes, I mean, we've been doing some work to create some coherence across all of these because we know that there are differences and we want them to all function in the same way, come from the same unit, have the same job description and expectation. So, that work is happening behind the scenes.
Thanks.
Okay. Anna?
Just real quickly, so focusing on the middle schools. So, last year, we started investing in circles of support, so... Which is somewhat similar to the idea of having that person there wrapping around the students. Has there been any discussion around how this might dovetail with... They're currently utilizing circles of support because what I hear at the schools is that they're... The kids are really looking for something at middle school as well.
I don't know enough about that, so I'm not sure if any of you guys have seen this question.
I think that's a really good point. And I think we'll continue... We'll look into that. That's great feedback. Thank you.
Okay.
So, the next priority action is related to our conversation that we had with Ricardo about opportunity youth. And this priority action is specific to the Office of Early Youth Reengagement, where the one early approval is around the director position that's highlighted in yellow. So, we've had this conversation before where the Office of Youth Reengagement is focused on those three goals that are listed. And a reminder that this is really the work... And Ricardo and I were talking about this a little bit earlier today, about bringing coherence, collaboration, and really connectedness to this work. We do feel a sense of urgency around this. We feel this is one way to get after this and an early way to get the office started. We have done quite a bit of repurposing to get this office up and running, as you can see. And the small piece of the early approval is related to the salary for the director.
Nikki and Dean?
My question is, why are we using three non-union professionals and what would their responsibility be?
So, I will take a stab at that. We see these people in a non-union professional role as maybe working a non-traditional school year, maybe different numbers of days on the contract, flexible schedule, right, different hours. Someone who would be able to maybe flex a little bit with community partners in the way that they're working together with us.
And like anything that's on this list, we'll be certain to follow up with more information. But in Ricardo's last presentation to you on opportunity youth, he had a kind of a whole section on what the office would look like and what each of those people would do. So, just remember, you can use that as a reference back here as well.
Dean?
Yeah, I just... The budget amounts for the salaries seem significant to me. I was just wondering, what is this administrator do? And, you know, I understand the three bullets right on top, but that seems like a... How much work is this person going to do? That's... That seems like a fairly significant salary for one administrator.
But that's a few benefits too.
I'm sorry?
It includes benefits.
I'm sure, yeah. That's still pretty significant salaries. I'm just wondering, what are they doing?
For budget purposes, we use averages. And that is not related specifically to JavaScript, which hasn't been built yet. But when we plug in a non-union position or administrative position, we use the averages. That's an average. And we can tighten that up between now and April.
Well, I would just... I would... I don't know what... Similar work is going to be done in the family engagement people around a different focus. And that's 80, 80 apiece. And 90 apiece for this job, for the three. And the admin, I'd really like to see what... How many people are... Are they going to administer three people? I don't... I need to know a little bit more about this because it just seems high, especially when we just looked at the family engagement staff is going to be 80. That's a decent job and a decent salary. These deserve 10 grand more? I'm not certain.
Okay. And Nikki, it's Kate next, and then Nikki. Thanks.
Two comments here. I mean, I'm... We had a discussion about this initial plan. I certainly wasn't completely aligned with some of the plan proposed in terms of kind of centralized staff, et cetera. And this looks like a reflection of that. So, I don't know if that's something that the rest of the board was or wasn't, but I'd like to at least be aligned on what that approach is before we fund it. And for me, at least, coherence, et cetera, isn't the highest need. It's, I mean, literally seats. I mean, I've talked to folks who are like, I had to wait till the end of the year to get into this program because there weren't seats. And the seats in some of the programs are taking zero off this... These numbers, right? So, if we can get more young people into alternative programs now by funding seats in existing programs, I would love to see an alternative proposal and at least have the discussion as to why we don't think that is the best choice, so... Because we have a lot of existing programs in these areas.
Can I just comment? I mean, let's have that conversation.
We should just have the conversation, right? I'm not an expert by any means, but it's...
Yeah, and we can have it. We've got a presentation coming up for the board on the opportunity project at the upcoming regular board meeting, a week from today, so we can revisit this idea there as well. But I just want to just remind the board that the lack of coordination for this group of youth that, you know, are just in great need of our support is what is missing. You know, we need more seats always, but that's what we're looking for in this administrator. And I think the vision always was that it would be sitting out in the community and not here at Doyle. So, we can talk more about that.
For me, look, if we're going to spend 400 grand, then how many more young people are going to be in an alternative program because of these four positions, right?
Right.
And if there's not a material number more, we're still going to need the seats. So, how are we going to...
Yep, I hear the argument.
Well, and adding on to that is understanding what would they be doing? Because if we're connecting students with programs, but the programs don't have the seats, because are they actually teaching? Or what do those... I assume with non-union professionals, they're not actually teaching.
And that's what gets to my question. Is there a way to figure out how much it would cost to do it with reunion professionals if there was a teaching component? And could we figure that out?
So, what I'm hearing is the board would like to hear a lot more about this before we go forward. I think, can we just leave it at that?
Yeah, I'd like to just talk about the things that I'd like to hear more about.
Okay. Then it'll come back.
Teacher, I think, wanted to add a little bit more.
I'd like to know... I'd like two things, just a general expression is that I really can't... You know, as Kate said, I miss givings the first time this was one. And really, the lack of focus that there's these 450 students and we're going to do cool things to help them is not, to me, anything that I'd be comfortable funding without... These are the particular students we're targeting. This is why we're targeting. These are the program... This is what we want to do with them. And then, the second piece is that the goals have to be better defined, much, much better defined, and more focused also. So, those are the two pieces where I'd like to add to the discussion.
Okay. And Anna?
So, my quick question would just be, what staff is being repurposed? Also, too, how would this Office of Opportunity Youth work alongside our alternative programs that we have? And how do we... How is it all going to work together?
Okay. Great.
Good stuff. Community schools.
Okay, community schools. So, this priority action really represents our continued commitment to community schools, moving from two to four community schools. And you will see that there are three components of this priority action. The first is a community schools coordinator, a resource coordinator, which we have found has been essential, sets a school up for success, and gets them situated so that they can actually function as a community school effectively. The second piece is around a research-based and intentional family engagement strategy, which is families and schools together. And then, the last piece of this is really about a parent liaison position to really deepen those relationships in schools. And it's important to note here that there is a distinct difference when it comes to roles and responsibilities between the community schools coordinator and the parent liaison. We believe that those are two actually really distinct buckets of work and wanted to call that out here in this priority action. The place where there is a potential for early approval is around the resource coordinator position, wanting to get those schools set up for success early. We learned that it's really important, as we expand, to get those people in the schools before the year is over. So, that's why you see that highlighted on the slide.
And Dean, can we also find out how much it would cost if we used not... If we used union professionals?
Okay. Any...
It does appear... It appears the parent liaisons have... It does appear, it appears the parent liaison's advocates are budgeted here as SEAs at 50, 50 grand per the last piece? Okay, so just, uh, what's the current cycle of the grant funding?
Meaning where are we with the?
What's, how many years are left in it?
Yeah, because we have kind of multiple streams of grant funding.
Right, or how many, or how many years are left in them?
Uh, two years, I think. Michelle, we've got two years, right?
Four, two, three, yeah, so two years after this year.
Two years after this year, yeah.
So that where it says that a grant funds the other half, that will continue for next year and the year beyond?
Yeah.
Okay, that's long-term budgeting. Got to figure that out.
Yeah, and remember, these are still our initial pilots, and we had always planned in having four initial pilots. This would be, we had two, and then these two. And depending on what we learn about the effectiveness of those schools, we decide on, getting back to our earlier discussion on, when we know something works, the extent to which is bringing, going to bring it to scale, and at what pace, those questions would be answered at that time. This is not a scaling proposal, this is a completing our pilot phase proposal. Okay, any other, no other questions? This one is a yellow, which means that it, they'd like to, this will be coming back to the board fairly soon, so I think if we have any concerns about this, it'd be, you probably want to know now?
Yep.
Okay.
Our last slide. We recognize that our budget discussions this spring would not be complete if we didn't take on these topics, especially the safety and security. It might not be ready for the April budget proposal, but it would certainly appear sometime before June, when the board votes on a preliminary budget for next year. The 2X charter who talked about tonight, as we said, it's very evolving story. And then we also have to ask ourselves, what do we do if additional 2X charter schools are created in year two, year three, year four? Not just the two that we have now. And lastly, we have to update the TID 25 allocation plan. For those who are not familiar, it's a $9.27 million resource that was negotiated between us and the city. Those are our funds, 9.27 million. We're spending that out over the next few years, and that factors into what we're doing next year. And that's it.
Yeah. Kate?
So just three things that I didn't see on the list that I wanted to raise. The first was behavior, whether that be impacts from any potential changes from the BEP policy or incremental resources that we might believe we need in schools, either on kind of the mental health side or, or the security side. I just, I was surprised to not see something here. For me, I'd probably put that above everything on the list that, that was already listed. And so, but just, can you comment on how, is there something forthcoming there? What's, we're? Or do you want to comment, Jen?
Yeah, I can comment. I think that we already talked about safety and security, kind of forthcoming. So we just need some time to figure that out, and there'll be something that folds into the budget later. And then on the behavior education plan, I mean, it's all, also, you know, I mean, we're early, still in the budget process, I mean, we've got several months to go. But we've, uh, we've, we've invested a lot of resources into the behavior education plan, and I think the team that is charged with allocating those resources and the chiefs who work with each school on the approval of their school-based budget, which is where, how they determine how best to put those resources to use at the school level, um, I think we, we want to work the resources that we have, as opposed to investing more. The second part of that, Kate, is that we are about to embark on the, um, kind of student services allocation process review, right? Which is not just special ed staffing, but inclusive of staffing related to the behavior education plan. And I, I hear, heard you talk about even slight changes, right, not massive changes. But we, we're eager to actually see the results of that review before making any significant changes to how we allocate resources related to the BEP. So that's the thinking right now, doesn't mean it won't change as the conversation goes forward.
On the mental health side as well, I mean, there's a...
Yeah, and on mental health, the reason it's not here is because we already have a plan to increase from four, uh, schools that are receiving behavioral, the Health and Schools Initiative, sorry, and I'm still a little bit under the weather, so my brain isn't working as fast as I want it to. And we're going to eight. So we're actually doubling the number of schools that will be, will be integrating behavioral health, and that's happening, doesn't need to show up on this list, based on existing resources.
Okay, that's helpful. Second question was just around pathways. This would appear that there's no incremental resources for pathways in the budget next year, is that accurate?
It is and it isn't. Last month, when we talked about staffing, you may recall that there were some incremental improvements made to the school-based staffing, workbooks, in order to implement pathways well. So that's where it shows up in the budget, as opposed to as a priority action tonight. And you know, we use grant funding for all the professional development, et cetera.
So that, so you're saying that there were some resources shifted into pathways and away from other, but, but within the school budget as it stood?
Correct.
Okay. And then the last question is around advanced learning. So it's, again, it's, you know, if you go back to those priority areas.
Surprised not to see something.
You know, given the level of investment right now, we have an advanced learning, we, I think it's like a million dollars that we spend a year on advanced learning for a quarter of our students. And so it's, you know, it's like 300 students per AL specialist, and I don't know, it's like a hundred dollars per kid or something. So given that this is kind of academic excellence is core to our mission, um, at some point, if we want to action that priority area, we are as a group going to have to be okay making investment of time, some, somehow time into this area, and I think that's a conversation that we should have, so.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be, I mean, I just pulled it.
No, I, I, I just, I believe it's closer to 1.8 million.
It's between one and two, you're right.
Yeah, that's all.
It's between one and two. It doesn't change the math a whole lot when you're talking about 6,000 kids.
Anna?
And I just wanted to clarify my, my comment about the opportunity youth and that position. And the thing I want us to look at is because we're adding a director of special education, we have director of mental and behavioral health, we have student services, and then we would add this individual in. So really looking at how they're going to be working together, because obviously they're serving a group of students that cross over amongst all those directors.
Anyone else?
Okay. Can I talk about next steps a little bit, Larry?
Sure.
Before we wrap it up? Oh, because you mentioned early, early approval in March or April, and March is a week from now. I just need to be real clear on what my marching orders are before I leave this room. So, um, the sense that I'm getting from the board, and I want to test this assumption, is that going to the board for early approval in one week, um, well, it seems to me like it might be pushing it a little bit, that the board wants, uh, you know, kind of a more detailed write-up on each of these priority areas, um, and just needs some answers to some fundamental questions before approving. I just want to make sure I'm getting that clear, because obviously I would love to be able to push the three early approvals through as soon as possible, because, um, the Opportunity Youth Project, as you know, is one that we feel a great urgency to address. We've got a group of children who aren't being adequately kind of attended to, and we'd like to be able to move on filling that role sooner rather than later, so we can get things ready for the next school year. The... On that one, I would say, I think I, I heard quite consistently that there's quite a few open questions on that one. I heard that too. And that, and so I would not, definitely not for March. Not for March. The community schools, two resource coordinators, um, also, we want those two to get up and running as soon as possible, getting a head start on hiring, finding great people.
It's the, it's the union question, if they can give me that information.
That's an easy one, okay. All right, so that I'm going to push for the March board meeting. I'm glad we're doing this, you guys. And then the third is about the tech plan, um, which we would like to move forward because this is about procurement and getting, you know, things purchased. And it's, it's, uh, 9,000 devices that are, is it, I'm making that number up, was I right? My God, my brain actually is working. Um, 9,000 devices, right? And I, just, to be able to move, and that's, that's swapping out devices as well as...
I think we had questions of the take-home. I know I did, I know Anna did.
That's sort of separate, yeah.
I think T.J. did.
Yeah, I'm not sure the take-home policy is tied to that. So definitely we have questions on the take-home, but on the, this particular, but on the purchase.
Okay. I misunderstood that, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
I would love to have a dialogue about how we think, how we, that I have to, that I have to...
All right, we're going to move it ahead then.
Okay. So it sounds to me like I'm going to move ahead, you should expect on next meeting's agenda, an opportunity to vote on those two early approvals on opportunity youth. We're going to give it a little more love and attention, get you some more information, with the goal of having that, our goal will be to get you comfortable with early approving that, um, no later than April. So that's my goal. Okay, thanks, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Sorry, uh...
Second.
All right.
All right.